..............................
Rukopamme kapan tataka klorubulalankatapelu? Orilebua hulu bommelibondate kabutien balona. Karulo yeu kitwe bapala ki e kuswanyani hauhulu feela. Olehtakiseta ka humewa halona ki komiti ya parlamente ya Free State. Jolokhalitiba hee kaharuho parlamente. Onalidu komiti. Seu ilonghuri dite. Seu ilonghuri chebeto ya zonak. Hulu hulu. Uuncheta pili huyakamula otewa na ya Africa Burua. Chebeto ya ya parlamente kabutana. Juali. Kinalidu komiti ka ufapafapa. Kaharuho parlamente ya Africa Burua e Cape Townu le kaharuho parlamente. Ya Free State amuna yoloka province eh eh bommelibondati. Mehe. Kajenulena. Limewe ti komiti e i karabelan hotasile hae ilin kokta. Moli official ya premier. Komitiye na. Chebeto ngaya yona. Jolokhalitiba huri musebezuwa parlamente. Huyakamula otewa Africa Burua. Witi teile. Nisebezing emiraru ekasi chutulu. Musebezuwa pili kiwana hori ringi oversight. Kamanzua manu. Parlamente i karabela. Bakensahu ni tifata huri. Executive. E etelletu mpili ki presidentekapa. Province muna etelletu mpili ki premier. Chebeto yayona. Napo yeu bakupan. Ore lindiakarulo aba arula di chelleteze yangma fapeng. Hori bafeela. Basebedisa di chelleteze okatsile petayete. Bata kaharuho komitiye na hulu hulu. Departmente na yeu hori ringi akomi. Jolu ona oblela huri. Premier. Ota atwa a atwa account. Hori na usebeza juang. Kakakare zopa kensau uncheta pili ditabatebelo sa bahaiwa Free State. Komitiye na. Mi komitiye na hekatsile jualu ibapala karulo yeu hori ringi oversight. Eh bakensaa official premier moli akokta. Juali. Memoyaka jenulena huyakamula otewa na ya Africa Burua. Witi teile mula uongo hori ringi. Witi teile sectioning ya seventy six. Irigitalusa ore section seventy six. Italusa ka opeta hala hori. Hori mula ufitiswe. Di province diluke loaki huri di ndiakarulo mula uongo. Kamanzua manu. Jolokhalitiba huri mani Cape Townu mani. Cape Townu. Malku a parlamente. A roto kamicha emedi. Kinal National Assembly. Kinal National Council of Provinces. Mi National Council of Provinces. Ikinseba emedi. Batlahang di province inkaufapafapa nagaru na ina ya Africa Burua. Juali. Mula wana was section seventy six. Wana o kajenulena liling. Lu bizetitwenkwanu olutotali. Inkakarulo. Uo na kesika mula. Di input se oletabengli diyente. Di tota di fitiswa kaharuho parlamente yaru na muna Free State. Mi murauhumo nuhe. Ibe diiswa eh unational council of of provinces. Mehe obutlo kwaha hulu eh bommelibondate kabukuswanyani feela. Eh huri milau ekaring eh sekamilau. Ekaring ye na ya erutota ri inputa bompatovaka balitalusa dize nakoyeu. Balin balitognya balimemela olutova karulo eh yakopanu ye na. Balitalusa diize huri. Mula ota ta sekamula osena se lungo se tamia osi fitiswe. Moli libelezongo olutota lieta eh di inputu one. Kesika mula o sa Public Service eh Commission. Mehe kesona se lungo huri eh sekamula osena. Le libelezongo olutota lingaka karulo eh 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 ho so. Mehe kinalitsepe petayete kabukuswanyani huri. Eh leta feela lindiakarulo eh sekamula osena sa Public Service Commission. Kauri alue hee kidiwamudulasutulo wa komitiye na. Ilin eh Honorable Clute ore atwa lepe lidiyanebo.
Good morning Dumelang Huimorda. Thank you for waiting a half an hour. We were just waiting for the last people to um. To also be present when we start with this uh meeting today. Uh welcome to this uh very important meeting today where we are going to deal with the Public Service Commission Bill. Uh and I think we were just told exactly what kind of bill this is. It's a section seventy six bill. Uh but before I start, my name is Armand Cluta. I am the chairperson of the what we call it that governance committee. Uh in the Free State Legislature. I'm also going to request members of the committee, starting at my nearest members of the public as well.
Kialabo. Dumelang Batwadi. Na ki opa khawaani. Kesitosa komitiye na. Kialabo.
Dumelang Batwadi. Kalibito kintabisen kharriyegui. Kesitosa komiti kialabo.
Dumelang Batwadi. Kalibito kimuli fifoko sithosa komiti.
Dumelang Batwadi le se chavasa wutavelo kakakarezo libito laga gi mamigi mkabela. Kesitosa komitiye na ya parlamente ya Free State kialabo.
Good morning everyone. I'm David Mackay, a member of this committee.
Good morning. My name is David Von Fearin, also a member of the committee. Thank you very much, members. I want you to imagine something. Um you go to a hospital. And at the hospital. Um the nurse and this might have happened to you. The nurse at the hospital. Um is rude. Um you are in pain and you're sitting there and the nurse is rude. The doctors there are rude. And they don't really look like they feel like. Um attending to your medical needs. Or you go to police um office. And you want to lay charges for whatever reason. And the police official sitting there also doesn't really look like he wants to. Um to give you some service. Has this happened to you? I think you know people who have had these um. These experiences. Where you even go to the traffic center, you want to. Uh renew your license and the traffic center is either not open or there isn't enough. Personnel and officials there. And you don't get any services. So this is what happens in South Africa in general. And that's why there is a Public Service Commission. So we all I also always ask, what do you do then? Where do you complain? When the government isn't giving you the services that you're supposed to be getting? Now, there are other institutions like the Human Rights Commission. But they mainly look into. Whether you receive human well services according to. Um what the constitution says, which is water, sanitation, electricity. And sewage removal. That's basically your four basic. Uh services you should be getting from from local government especially. But where do you go to? Where you go can you complain about these matters? Now, the other institution that deals especially with. Officials in government is the Public Service Commission. And that's a institution where we as public can go to to say, listen. That official at that state department. Um is not doing what he or she is supposed to be doing. They are not acting professionally. That's why the the Public Service Commission is there. And today we're going to deal with the amendment bill. So there is actually already a Public Service Act. Um but the commission has indicated to parliament, especially to us. That currently as the bill is. It doesn't allow them more functions. Now, one of the functions, I think we all agree. Uh that should be attended to is municipalities, local government. Where officials in local government are not giving us the services that we are supposed to be getting. But the act as it is currently does not allow the. Public Service Commission to investigate those matters. So that's why we're here today. It's an amendment bill. Uh it actually wants to assist. Uh us. But it also looks to improve on the 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 bill as it is. So that it can also do its well, make sure that there is accountability. So that's why we're here today looking at the bill. I just want to quickly ask. The Public Service Commission in the Free State, Prof. Brian Akere. Uh maybe just to introduce himself. Uh and the rest of the team who's going to be uh doing. Uh who are sitting here from the PSC, the Public Service Commission. Then I'm going to hand over to Mr. Ashley Sewell. Who's the provincial commissioner from the Western Cape Public Service Commission. Uh you will be going through the bill and you will see there are clauses which is mainly what he's going to focus on. So the clauses starts on on the English version on page twenty one. So we need refers to clauses. You can start from page twenty one. And follow the clauses as he deals with them there. But Prof. Brian Akere, welcome and please introduce your team to us. Thank you very much.
Dumelang. Eh kialabo udulasutulo. Eh. Le wela lese chavasena kashikuri. Besituluetze monana. Otla utwa serbatswaleze nso onarle. Public Service Commissioni repatweki. Le kotata meiso la mula ola Free State. Le ika ma nyando oba nalima ikarabelo a. Sasile hae chikasu uletu. Okay. Lamkutan. Yeah, so Public Service Commission. Okay. Thank you. Eh Public Service Commissioni. Ki one institution na kabupa. Udulasutuloa Public Service Commissioni ki Professor Somadora Fikini. Oh kabumadima bekashikulena ana le. Me kapiyanyani ming. Eh bakenzeding. Chikalebuna babamba barapatilemba Public Service Commissionilelebuna. Batorotea mona ba. Banale roona roona mona le. Deputy Chairpersonearona. Me Zuki Colomba. Kiene deputy chair Public Service Commission abaka obana feela. DC if you can. Create them. And then Renali. Eh Commissioner. Nancy Ngwenya, she was a caretaker commission. Move Free State T B four appointment ya. Commissioner Nakedi me akueme bawone. And then Renali Commissioner Asil. Kiene anzea. Ana mesipere na ya billionar klenka onika shikulina hulu. Esalansai i i i i kweza otwa kalonya yona. Me ki. Ki mungaro na ilungoring ukhana o. Honorable life aluse Commissioner Asil. If you can stand up so they can see you. Commissioner Asil is actually also. Uh an expert in this particular bill. Uh she's been very instrumental hore. Billionar kono oba e linyona. Eh morlending. Juali hee. Kasha kulena rklushalusa rona billiona. Eh. Ma iki misetsua yonaki i. Obani i bata ore i. I lukisemula o unzuliting wa Public Service Commission Act. Mani chapter ten. Kama ikarabelo a ore. I kono re le koleza meiso. Ya puso. Ma fapeng ka feela. Mbase ilenurinsilesa etza ala arakara kinya. Eh fapala. Puso sile hae. Le di public entities. Si bo eskomu jolujua. Juali billiona ebata ore i akareze. Eh local governmentele di public entities. Ore kono re lika ornar buanar katu sa juang katza meiso. Eh ilungoring eh hanke. Huyaka ofana kanitshebele zu kama fapa farloani. Le le muile laze ba orna. Eh ona le. Matata raparazing hulu hulu local government. Juali. Really Public Service Commissioni lira eleza. Eh machotata meiso le national parliamentele. Provincial or bakemar tuze. Rebano orna arka. Tisa juangza meiso ya imaspa lele di public entities. So kasha kulena intate sili le mea makinde. Le deputy chair le mek Commissioner Ngwenya. Bata. Banale moba lachelan ting. Oleka or buansaloo le muisa orna. Billiona etza ma juang etu ahokai eh ahokai. Rabata riku ele oluna ore. Lindiakarulo. Ma bapili diteenza billiona na obani. Alisa ndiakarulo. Rkochu kaka yonenzilete na narinkile. Eh di chua lozading. Le kenzading za za ro na mona Free State. Wasene galikuanana bo botkaripi. Eh boteneze neru zwa ten and so on. Batwa yete. Juali di chua lezen ordinka. Very seriously, aldi ngibube. I bila ra di lekula ra di shebar buanor na. Ri di kinyeleza juang hore. Di kono re di fana ka mona olitlenka ona hore. Le matrafaze eh eh kezomula onana. Wa Public Service Commission Bill. Uh Chairperson, without the waste of time, I would like to call upon Commissioner Asil. To come and and lead us in this. And then he will thereafter indicate. Who will come but before maybe. In terms of protocol, let us have. The deputy chairperson of the Public Service Commission. To come and just give us a background. And then uh she will lead from there. With the national commissioner also having a word or two. Uh DC, can you please come and then followed by the national commissioner and then commission.
Good morning, um members of the community. My name is Zuki. Zuki Swam Colomba. I'm from Pretoria at the head office of the Public Service Commission. And I'm the deputy chairperson of the Public Service Commission. I'm just here to introduce myself. Otherwise, the overview will be done by Commissioner Nancy Ngwenya. Who will provide overview of what the Public Service Commission Amendment Bill is about. Its purpose, its intent, and right is as the PSC. We are pledging and pleading for your support of the bill. Because it will be good for conducting oversight work. To make sure that the services of municipalities actually improve. To members of the community in this district. Otherwise, thank you very much. We are excited to be here in the Free State. The Free State has become my second home. I can't speak to Sutu etzwa na but if you gave me a husband. Maybe perhaps I would learn very fast and relocate to the Free State. Otherwise.
Members of the esteemed committee. Government departments that are present here. Municipalit Ngwenya. Eh Nakedi has already indicated that I was once here. And I think a number of the members sitting here. I engaged in my capacity as the caretaker commissioner. Of the Free State. So when I'm here, I am home. I don't need a husband, but I'm home. As it has been indicated, I'm joined today by my colleagues. From Western Cape, Free State and the National Office. And we are happy that the DC is here. And we are excited eh as a Public Service Commission. To brief you this morning as community members. On the background, intent and purpose. And the provision of the Public Commission eh Public Service Commission Bill. That is currently before Parliament for endorsement. The bill is an important piece of legislation for us as the Public Service Commission. As it will redefine the operational structure. Of the office of the Public Service Commission. We are the Public Service Commission. And we are fourteen commissioners in terms of the constitution, a a team of fourteen commissioners. And then the administrative arm of the PSC is called. The Office of the Public Service Commission. I think it is imperative that I differentiate between the two to ease your understanding. So eh the bill will then redefine. The operational structure of the Office of the Public Service Commission, which is the administrative arm. That is supporting the the commission to fulfill its mandate. And furthermore, entrench the scope of services provided by the Public Service Commission. Across all spheres of government. That includes local government and state-owned entities. Currently, as I'm standing before you this mom- this morning. The PSC does not have jurisdiction over local government. And public. State entities, own entities. And that is what the bill seeks to achieve. To extend our mandates. To cover even the local sphere of government and eh public entities. That's the purpose of the bill this morning. So this bill. Has been in development for a number of years. And the process started with an internal assessment. Aimed at answering the question of how the role and the function of the PSC can be enhanced. So as to provide full adherence to the provision of the constitution. As is it relates to our mandate as the Public Service Commission. In addition, Parliament in twenty eleven. Then adopted a resolution which stated that the Public Service Commission. Must report on the implementation of section one nine five subsection one. Of the Constitution by the administration of government, organs of state. And public entities in South Africa. This resolution therefore obligated us as the PSC. To ensure that the work we do includes all spheres of government. Including municipalities and entities. Commissioner Nakedi if bekito kona kubuasi Sutu bekito buuwa. But again, my Sutu is hampered. If you are sick, you need a doctor. And when the and you cannot say when I'm sick, I don't need a doctor. Because the doctor will then prescribe. And make a diagnosis and give you a prescription to say. To take you out of this ailment. This is what you need to do. And I think this is what the bill seeks to achieve. When we go to our municipalities who have got multi-phased challenges. We are not saying we are the panacea of all the challenges that are facing municipalities and state-owned entities. But I believe as the PSC eh we can do something to address. Eh such challenges and ease the load from our municipalities. Unfortunately, then the the progress of the bill over the past number of years was delayed for a number of reasons. One of the reasons for the delay includes the change in ministers at national level. Particularly the Minister of Public Service and Administration. Which invariably led to the process of the bill's development. Eh having to start afresh with each new minister appointed. As a MPSA. And that delays us. We are however at this stage very pleased that the bill has advanced to the stage where we are now. As I'm presenting to you, we are conducting public hearings across the country. The bill has progressed very, very well, Honorable Chair. During the sixth administration. And was on the cabs of moving through the portfolio committee. And then to the National Assembly and to the eh N C O P. This process could however not be completed. Before the end of the sixth administration term of office. And the bill therefore lapsed again. But we here we are. The seventh administration then revived the bill. And the portfolio committee of Public Service Administration speedily attend. Attend attended to the processing of the bill, which included public hearings as we are here today. This culminated in the portfolio committee unanimously adopting the PSC bill. On the fifth of March twenty twenty five. Thereafter, the same bill was adopted by the National Assembly. On the eighteenth of March twenty twenty five. This is significant progress. We are now. We Are Now At This Stage, At The NCOP Stage Of The Legislative Processes. And We Trust That We Will Be Able To Rely On Your Support As Stakeholders For This Bill To Be Enacted Into Law. We Will Provide An In Depth Analysis Of The Bill, But I Will Use This Opportunity To Summarize A Few Of The Primary Objectives Which The Bill Seeks To Achieve. My, Our, Our, Our Presenter Will Be Here, Who Will Be Very Detailed. But Let Me First State That The First Objective Of This Bill, What Is It That We Want To Achieve? It Relates To The Issue Of Independence Of The Public Service Commission. Currently As Things Stands, The, The Public Service Commissioning Is Not On The Same Footing As Other Constitutional Bodies Established In Chapter Nine Of The Institution, Your AGs. Eh, I, I Can Name Them. We Are Not At The Same Footing Because We Report To A Government Department That We Need To Exercise Eh Oversight. By Chapter Ten Constitution, The Principle Of Independence Of Structure, Function And Operation Is However Not Different Between Chapter Nine Or Chapter Ten, Constitutional Authority. The Law Is Clear That Constitutional Authorities, All Of Them, Must Be Independent In Terms Of Structure And Operation. And Currently It Is Not So For The Public Service Commission. This Was Confirmed By The Constitutional Court In The Matter Of Langerbeck Municipality Versus The IC. In The Afforment- Affirmation Case, The Con Court Stated That Constitutional Authorities Like Us Must Manifestly Be Seen To Be Outside Of Government. So We Want To Be Outside Of Government And Not To Report To Any Department Because That Department, We Are Responsible For Its Oversight. Currently, The Public Service Commission Is Still Considered As A Department With A Reporting Line To The Minister Of Public Service Administration And With Reliance On The Prevailing System Of Support Applicable Eh, My Apologies. Oh, This Thing Is Running Too Fast. My Apologies. Let Me Start Afresh. Currently, We Are Considered As A Department With A Reporting Line To The Minister Of Public Service Administration And With Reliance On The Prevailing System Of Support Applicable To All Other National Departments. We Seek To Be Independent. This Is An Untenable Situation Especially In Light Of The Constitutional Obligations And Functions And Treats To The PSC. In Short, The PSC Is Established By The Constitution As A Monitoring And Oversight Body That Can Inspect. That Is Why We Have Got National Commissioners. That Is Why We Have Got Also Provincial Commissioners As We Have Commissioner Naka Edi Respect Us Of Our Constitution And Visage A Situation Where An Oversight Body Like The PSC Is Located Within A Government And Is Relying On Government Departments For Support Such As IT, You Know, Finance, Infrastructure Eh, Accommodation. We Must Go To DPWP For Accommodation Eh, But We Want To Be Independent. With This Self, Same Department Are Often On, On The Focus Of The PSC Monitoring And Oversight. There Is There's A Clear Conflict Of Interest Here Of Independence. The Situation Must Change. This Is What The Bill Envisage. This Situation, State Of Operation Must Change. We Cannot Report To A Department That We Also Have To Exercise Oversight Eh, For That Thing. Being Located Inside Of A National Depart- National Gov- Addresses, The Bill Addresses Is That Of Confirming Its Mandate Over All Spheres Of Government. Public In, Atstitution Says Currently. Um, And Also State-Owned Entities. We Are Aware That Could Be Seen To Be A Controversial Aspect And We Have Been Privy To The Submissions From Certain Sectors In Local Government That May Not Be In Favor Of Our Entry Into Local Government Specifically. I Think We Need To Be Clear That We Are Aware Of That. But The Local Government In Terms Of Public Administration, Eh, Eh, It Is Within Our Jurisdiction. My Apologies, This Thing Will Go And Come. That's Technology Currently Has Been Consulted Extensively. And We Have As Part Of The Development Of The Bill, Engaged With The Chief State Law Advisors Office On The Constitutionality Of The Bill. The Bill Has Been Certified By This Chief State Law Has Been Constitutionally Permissible. We Are Therefore Of The View That The Inclusion Of Local Government And State-Owned Entities Into The Fold Of Our Oversight, Of Our Mandate, The Jurisdiction Is Within The Framework Of What The Constitution Provides. We Often Hear That Local Government Especially Is Overregulated. I've Worked In The Sector For About Ten Years And I Agree. And That Compliance Obligation Are Cumbersome And That It Imposes Unnecessary Oversight Mechanism. So They Have AG, They Have All This, They Have All This. The Unfortunate Reality Is That Many Municipalities Are Not Function Effectively And Service Delivery To Residents Is Problem- Problematic. You Can Tell Me Even Here In The Free State, They Are Problematic. Eh, Unfortunately, My Leonard Commissioner, Eh, There Are Municipalities That Are In The ICU. Yeah. In The Recent Public Hearing On The Bill In Haute, North Western, The Western Cape, Residents Raised This Very Issue And Commenting On The Bill. In The View Of The Public Service Commission, There Is Therefore A Need For It To Play That Monitoring And Oversight Function Within This Sphere Of Government So That Support To Municipalities And Accountability Can Be Achieved. The Constitution Stipulates That Public Administration Must Be A Rich Amount Of 1.47 Billion On The Use Of Financial Reporting Consultants. These Consultants Were Used To Assist Municipalities With The Compiling Financial Report Documents As Well As Financial Statement. The AG Found That In The Vast Majority Of Cases, The Work Of The Consultant Were Of Poor Quality And That It Did Not Comply With The Auditing Standards That The AG Has Set. In Other Words, The Money Spent On This Consultant Could Have Been Considered As A Wasteful And Expense Eh, Fruitless Expense. Many Questions Can Be Raised In Light Of This. This Includes Eh, Is There Consequence Management And Recovery Of Funds To Hold This Official Accountable? Why Financial Consist- Consultants Are Needed? Especially When Municipalities Have High Ranking CFOs Whom We Are, We, We Say They Are Adequately Qualified To Hold Those Positions And Support Staff That Are Tasked With The Function Of Financial Administration. Why Would We Go And Need Such Consultants? In Addition, Will Any Consequence Management Take Place? And Will Affected Municipal To Such Consultants That Failed To Deliver? I Know This Example As It Demonstrates Areas Where The Extended Monitoring And Oversight Function Of The PSC Could Benefit The Local Sphere Of Government Such That They Have Value For Money. I'm From There, I Know. The PSC's Entry Into Support, The PSC Can Offer Local Government Via Its Proven Track Record Must Be Seen In The Context Of How Service Delivery Can Be Enhanced Within This Sector, Local Government. Our Common Goal Then Eh, Members Of The Community By The Higher Standards Of Integrity, Accountability And Service Excellence. To Achieve This, Our Efforts Must Be Citizen Centered, Reocan- Recognizing That Effective Governance Is Fundamental To Addressing One Poverty, Inequality And Unemployment. I Think The Committee Here Can Conquer That Democracy. So Our Democracy Flourishes When It Addresses The Socio Economic Needs Of The Poorest Of The Poor. I Think You Ok- You Agree With Me. Our, An Objective That Might Not Be Specifically Stated In The Bill, But Which The Bill Enable The PSC To Achieve Is That Of The Professionalization Of The Public Service. Cabinet Has Approved This Framework With Distinct Pronouncement That Professionalization Of The Entire Public Administration That Includes Local Government Is What Must Be Achieved. This Applies To Government At All Spheres And State-Owned Ent- Entities. The Intention Is Clear. All Of Government Must Be Professionalized. This Does Not Only Refer To Ensuring That We Treat Our Citizen With Furnace Pictures That Are Suitable, Skilled, Qualified And Competent To Deliver Services To All Our People. We Submit That The Bill Will Ensure That The PSC Will Be Able To Deliver On This Very Very Ni- Important National Objective, That Of Professionalizing The Public Service. I Will Conclude, Honorable Chair, My Introductory Remarks By Quoting From A Passage Within The NDP Which Commends On The Need For A Capable Ethical And Developmental State. The Passage, Passage Reads As Follows. A Devi- A Developmental State Needs To Be Capable. But A Capable State Does Not Materialize By Decree. Nor Can It Be Legislated Or Waived Into Exist- Existence By Declaration. It Has To Be Built Brick By Brick, Institution By Institution And Sustained And Rejuvenated Over Time. It Requires Leadership, Sound Policies, Skilled Managers And Workers, Clear Lines Of Accountability, Appropriate Systems And Consistent And Fair Application Of Rules. To Achieve The Aspiration Of A Capable And Developmental State, The Country Needs To Enhance Parliament Oversight Of Which We Are Part, Role, Stabilize The Political Administrative Interface. We Must Stabilize That The Political Administrative Interface, Professionalize The Public Service, Upgrade Skills And Improves Coordination. As I Sit Down, I'm Tempted To Quote What President, The Former President Nelson Mandela Said. He Says, "It Seems Impossible Until It Is Done." Thank You Very Much, Chair.
If You Are Willing, Considering That We Have Eh Already, We Are Running Late, Um, Whether You'll Be Able To Do Your, Your Presentation In Twenty Minutes, Will That Be Fine?
Certainly, Chair.
Thank You Very Much.
I'll, I'll Do My Best To Accommodate That. Good Morning, Dumelang, Mora. How Are All Of You? It's Friday, Are You Ready For The Weekend? Ladies And Gentlemen, I'm Going To, My Task Today Is To Take You Through Some Of The Very Important Provisions Of The Bill. I'll Explain To You, You've Got It In Front Of You. There Are Twenty Three Provisions. I'm Not Going To Go Into Detail And Give You A Lecture. I'm Going To Give You An Overview Of What Those Provisions Says. So Before I Get Into That, Just A Word Of Thanks To The Chairperson And The Honorable Members For Giving Us The Opportunity To Do This. And Most Importantly, Thank You To All Of You For Coming Out Today And Listening To Us. So Ladies And Gentlemen, If You Look At The Bill In Front Of You, The First Section That The Bill Deals With Is Something What We Call The Preamble. Now A Preamble Is Merely Just An Introduction. It Tells You What The Bill Seeks To Achieve. I'm Not Going To Explain The Imp- The Preamble In Detail. Commissioner Ngwenya Has Given You The Insight Into, Into That. The Bill Has Five Sections. The First Section Deals With Definitions And It Also Tells You What The Bill Will Actually Apply To. So Important Issues That We Need To Note. Some Of The Definitions That Are Now Included Is The Definition Of Public Administration, Which Now Says That Public Administration Includes Provincial National Government As Well As Municipalities And Entities. And That's A Very Important Definition, Ladies And Gentlemen. Because Like Commissioner Ngwenya Said To You, One Of The Reasons Why This Bill Has Been Introduced Is To Ensure That We Now Have The Power To Do Our Work Within Municipalities And State-Owned Entities. And I'll Explain A Little Bit To You When We Get To Those Sections, What It, What Work We Actually Do In Those Areas. Part B Is The Second Part And It Tells You How The Commission Is Constituted. We Are Fourteen Commissioners, As You've Heard. We Have Not Decided On That Number Ourselves, It's What The Constitution Says. The Constitution Says There Must Be Fourteen Commissioners. We Have Nine Provinces, You Have One Commissioner Per Province And Then You Have Five National Commissioners. And That Allows The Commission To Do The Work That It Does. Each Provincial Commissioner Is Responsible For Their Province And The National Commissioners Will Have Jurisdiction Over The National Um, National Government, Government Departments. So That's Why We Have Fourteen. Are We Are Appointed, We Are Not Politicians. We Go Through An Application Process, There's An Advert. We Apply For Those Jobs, We Must Prove That We Have The Necessary Skills And Expertise. And Then We Are Interviewed By The Different Legislatures. If It's A Provincial Commissioner, A Committee Like This In The Provincial Legislature Will Interview Us. There's A Recommendation Made To The House. Um, Once That Is Adopted, The Premier Endorses It. And Then The Final Person Who Makes The Decision To Appoint A Commissioner Is The President Of Our Country. So All Of Us Go Through Those Processes. Eh, The Only Difference Is If You're A Provincial Applicant, It Is The Provincial Legislature. If You Are A National Applicant, It Is The National Assembly That Will Come, That Will Manage That, That Process. Clause Four Tells You What Skills And Expertise A Commissioner Needs. You Can't Just Apply To Become A Commissioner. You Must Demonstrate That You Have The Necessary Qualifications And Skill. So The Bill Lists A Variety Of Different Qualifications That An Applicant Must Have. And You Can Read Through The Bull Um, What It Says. For Example, You Can Have A Qualification In Public Administration, Finance, Social Science, Science Or Law. I've Got A Law Degree So That Qualifies Me For That. The Other Commissioners Have Expertise In The Other Areas. But You Can't Just Have A Qualification. That Qualification Must Come Together With Experience. So You Need To Have A Minimum Of Eight Years' Experience As A Senior Manager. So That Is There To Show That Whoever Is Chosen And Appointed By The President Is Somebody That Will Be Able To Do The Job. Because They've Been Um, In The Environment Of Management, They've Worked In The Public Service For Example, Or They've Been In Academia, Worked For A University For A Number Of Years And They'll Be Able To Do Um, To Do The Work Of A Commissioner. So Clause Fourteen Just Tells You What Qualifications Is Required. Clause Four Says, When Can You Not Be Um, Be Appointed As A Commissioner? So For Example, If You've Been A Naughty Boy Or A Naughty Girl And You've Got A Criminal Conviction, There's No Way That You Would Be Able To Apply For The Position Of Commissioner. Because We Want To Ensure That Commissioners Are Of The Highest Ethical Standards And They Have Integrity And They Have Professionalism. So If You Fall Within Many Of The Categories In Clause Five, You've Got A Criminal Conviction Or You've Been Dismissed From Your Employment, You Will Not Be Able To Apply For The Post Of Commissioner. Clause Six Also Says That Once You're Appointed As A Commissioner, You Must Focus On Your Work As A Commissioner. You Are Not Automatically Allowed To Do Extra Work And Work Outside Your Work As A Commissioner. So If I'm A Lawyer And I'm Appointed As A Commissioner, I Can't Be Running My Own Legal Practice On The Side. I Must Focus On The Work Of The Commission. However, The, The Bill Says That You Can Ask The President For Special Permission. And If The President Decides That He's Going To Give You Permission To Do Extra Work, Then That Is In Order. So The Bill Explains That Process. Clause Seven Just Says That We Need To Have A Chairperson And A Deputy Chairperson. You've Met Our, Our Deputy Chairperson. Um, She's Introduced Herself. We Have, He's A Very Popular Individual, He's Approved By Him. But Clause Seven Merely Says Themselves Don't Make That Decision. It Is The Chair, Uh, The President That Decides On That. We Are All Full Time Commissioners, The Fourteen Of Us, We're Not Part Time. So If You Are Full Time Office Better, Naturally You Need To Be Paid For The Services That You Provide. So Clause Eight Just Goes Into Detail About How That Will Take Place. The President Will Decide. The President will decide what our remuneration is after taking recommendations into consideration from the Independent Commission for Remuneration of Public Office Bearers. So that clause just speaks to that. Clause nine, ten and eleven, ladies and gentlemen, goes to the nuts and bolts of what it is that the Public Service Commission can do. So clause nine says, we can do inspections as the commission. The chairperson used the example of if you've got a challenge at a hospital, at a clinic, that comes to the attention of the Public Service Commission. Amongst others, what we can do is conduct an inspection. We go to that facility and we inspect what's going on. We'll ask for records, we look at what the building looks like, we look at the procedures that are run. If it's a clinic and they don't cater for old citizens, people need to queue for long hours, and that is not what should be done, we can inspect those issues. We can also do our own investigations. An investigation is different from an inspection. An investigation means we look specifically into a matter, we've got specific items that we want to decide what is actually happening in a particular area. We'll interview people if they don't want to participate. Clause eleven says that we can then summon somebody. So if we are asking for documents from a municipality, for example, and the municipal manager just doesn't want to give us that documents, the bill now says that Public Service Commission, you will be able to issue him with a summons and demand that he comes to you, and demand that he or she gives you that information. If they don't comply with the summons, they can get into trouble, because we can then lodge a criminal case against them. They can be also taken through a disciplinary process if we find their action unreasonable and warranted. So those sections, nine, ten and eleven, tells you about what the power of the commission is. Ask for access to the information or the reports of the commission. It's not automatic, you might need to go through a process and ask the commission, "I've heard you've done a report on the clinic in Botshabelo, can I see what you've said?" And you can then contact the Public Service Commission. And if it is information that we can give to you, we will make that available to you. Clause thirteen is another important section in the bill. It tells you how are the decisions of the commission implemented. So if we make a decision, we've done an investigation, and we've given the department recommendations, and we've said to the department, "At your clinic, you need to do this, that and the other." They have sixty days from do one, two, three, four, or we're not going to do any of that. If they don't do that, the Public Service Commission will be able to either, if it's a province, it's a provincial department, we'd be able to report them to the legislature. And the legislature would be able to take action against them. If it's a national department, we can make that report to the National Assembly. There is something called directives that the Public Service Commission can implement, and a directive is different to a recommendation. A directive means that if we tell a department to do something, they must do something. And if they don't do that, the only option they have is to go to the courts and ask the courts to set aside or take away the decision of the commission. If they don't do that, then they have to implement that directive. So there's power there for the commission. Clause fourteen also says that as commissioners, we must be impartial. So we can't be involved in matters where we've got an interest. So if my brother is a school principal, I can't be investigating a matter that involves my brother's school, because I'm going to be biased towards him, I'm going to look after his interests. So it tells us we must be professional when we do our inspections and investigations. And if we have an interest, we need to step aside, we must recuse ourselves. Clause fifteen also says to everybody, officials and any interested party, that you can't obstruct the work of the commission. So if the commission is busy with an inspection and we want to go to a hospital, the CEO of the hospital or the nurses at the hospital cannot prevent us from going into the hospital, because that would mean that they would be obstructing the work of the commission. And if that happens, they would be able, they will get into problems, because we can then open cases against them, which could lead to them getting fines, or they could be subjected to a criminal case, and they could even face the inside of a jail for obstructing the work of the commission. So you can see, it's a very important provision, which safeguards the importance of the commission. You've heard Commissioner Ngwena tell you that one of the main issues that we want to achieve is to be an independent constitutional body. We don't want to be considered as a department. So part C of the bill and its clauses sixteen and seventeen tells you how that's going to be done. We're not going to be a department, we're now going to be a secretariat. We won't have a DG like all of the other departments have. We're going to be having a chief executive officer. The chairperson of the Public Service Commission will be the executive authority of the Public Service Commission and not a national minister. That secures our independence. The second last provision, Chair, am I doing for time, am I on track? The second last section or part of the bill deals with finances and accountability. We must still get money from Parliament to be able to do the work that we do. So Parliament will still be giving us money. We must still be audited, like any other state institution, by the Auditor General. They will look at our books, how did we spend our money? Did we comply with all of the rules and regulations around how you must spend your money? So the Auditor General will still be responsible for that. The bill also says that PSC don't only rely on the money of government that Parliament gives you. You will now also be able to charge, in some cases, a fee to departments. So for example, if we're going to do an investigation into the Department of Health in the Free State, once the bill goes through, we would be able to say to the department, "Because we are doing this investigation in your department, we are going to be charging you for that particular investigation." So it enables us to get some of the costs back for the work that we are doing. It's another important intervention. The final part in the bill is what we call the general section. And there's two very important areas. The one is rules. Rules is simple, it tells the commission that in order to do the work that you must, you must develop rules, rules of operation. So for example, if we're doing an inspection or an investigation, what are the rules regarding that? How do you go about finalizing an inspection? How do you proceed with an investigation? So we have rules in place currently. Those will continue to be in place once the bill becomes an act, and we'll have to refine some of them to fall in line with a new piece of, with a new act. But it gives us the power to make rules. The final issue that I'm going to be speaking about is what we call transitional provisions. So once the President signs this, after you agree that you want the bill to be enacted and the President signs it, it now means that we will have one year, twelve months, to move outside of government. So when we move outside of government, we will need to have our own systems. We're not going to be relying on government for anything. So for our buildings, for our computer equipment and all of those things, we will now be able to do that on our own, no reliance on government systems. And we would need some time to be able to do that. So the bill says you have twelve months, PSC, to do that. And then after that twelve months finishes, the bill says that within three years afterwards, you must phase in your functions and your powers over municipalities and state-owned entities. So it means that if the President signs tomorrow, we won't automatically and immediately have the power over municipalities, because we still need to ensure that we get more people to assist us to do the work that we do. And there's many other things that we would need to put in place. So the bill gives us a little bit of time to do that. The last comments that I will make to, this will be our fifth province with public hearings. We've been to Gauteng, we've been to Western Cape, we've been to Eastern Cape, Northwest, and now we would have finished Free State. There's four more provinces left. It is Northern Cape, Mpumalanga, Limpopo and KwaZulu-Natal. So we need to do the same as we're doing here in those provinces. And once we've completed that process, it goes to the National Council of Provinces, which is another section in Parliament, President. And the President must then give his signature and approve it. And once that happens, the bill will now become an act, and everything that I've said to you, we'd be able to do. So ladies and gentlemen, in the twenty minutes that I've had, I've been able to explain to you in a very summarized way what the bill provides for. I'm going to hand over to the chairperson, and the chairperson will then be asking you if you've got any questions or comments, and we'll be here to answer any of your questions or comments. If there's not enough time for that, we're still around, and you can come and speak to us if you've got any questions, we'll be around in the wall, so please come and talk to us. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
To get it in twenty minutes' time, that is efficient public service, eh? Can you imagine? Yes, let's not go there. Ladies and gentlemen, before I start with inputs from US community, let's just start. Are there any clarity-seeking questions? I'm going to do it in two parts. If you've got any questions on the bill, you can raise your hand, so we can attend to that. And then afterwards, I'm going to get a feeling of, it doesn't look like it. Ma'am, yes, thank you. Yes, please come to the front, number two. Sir, you can come to the front as well. Number three, questions, eh? Before we go to inputs, what your inputs are. So let's get those clarity-seeking questions, please. Thank you, ma'am, you can continue.
Thank you, Chairperson. It is unfortunate that we did not get the bill in time, so that one could have interrogated it. But the question nonetheless will be under, or my understanding will be under, subjected to a correction. I'm seeing that in the bill, it is said that even individual employees can go to the commission and complain, and the commission can also go into institutions of public sector, institution, and do investigations, and also talks about the funding, that whichever institution will be investigated or will be assisted, will then have to pay. First, I want to check, isn't it a duplication that, or isn't going to be a duplication that we already have unions, we have bargaining councils, we have CCMA, you know, we have such institutions that are already dealing with, let's say, employee grievances or compliances? And we also have different institutions, like the lady was explaining, the chapter nine institutions that actually deals with grievances of communities. So isn't, as far as the non-service delivery or the every anomaly that can go within the public service? So I'm just checking whether, is that not going to be duplication on some? Or the Public Service Commission would be something like a recourse in an event that those institutions are failing? For example, in a workplace, if an employee, an individual employee took all the necessary internal steps or all the recourse mechanisms that are available to them, then the Public Service Commission will be the last leg? Or a Public Service Commission, anybody can go to it before even exhausting other avenues that are available to, especially an employee, because I mean to labor relations, that is a mistake into that. So I just wanted to understand that, to say. Also, if individuals, maybe there's an element of whistleblowing, how does the service, I mean, Public Service Commission says, "This is how we're going to cater for people who would have sort of whistleblown", so that they, they, they are... So I just generally want to understand whether is Public Service Commission in a way taking over some responsibility of some institutions, or they're there just to enhance or to ensure enforcement of some of the already interventions that are in place? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, number two.
Thank you very much. A good day to all. My name is Paul Tosham. I'm the chairperson of IMAC, being one of the organization being in the sector of traditional health practitioners, and men's sector, women's sector, disability, LGBTQ plus sector, or sectors of Sanak Civil Society Forum. Mine also from the organization point of view. We wanted to make some inputs. But most unfortunately, we are going to restructure our input in a format of clarity, question seeking. We would like to believe that there is provision made on the appointment of commissioners. And the provision that has been made on the appointment of commission, it's sectorally, it's multi-sectorally approached so, whereby it allows some certain sectors, especially let me be specific, the traditional health practitioner sector, to be also included on the commissioner, to be also appointed on the commission. Those who are appointed as, in relation to the traditional health practitioners act, number twenty-two of two thousand and six, and the CIA, the customary initiation, or those who are qualified in terms of the being, those who qualify in terms of the being. One other question is that, one other question is that, I've seen on clause ten, paragraph three point eighteen, the commission only deals with the grievances of the employee. How we would have liked as the organization that also the commission should be given the mandate to deal with the unfair dismissal in the public services? As the first point of interest, because we know there are chapter nine institutions that are dealing with that. But we would have liked as the organization, because we are having currently a case whereby a social development employee has been unfairly dismissed without following due process. Number, lastly, as the sector, I've mentioned that, as the sector, we would like to see the commission being broadly, we would like to see the law and women's rights people in the commission, we would like to see the labor people in the commission, we like to see people from research sector, we like to see people from the disability sector, we like to see especially people from the HIV people and LGBTQI. Last question, before I resume my seat, is that now that the commission cater for only fourteen, and the constitution only, caters for only fourteen commissioners, accommodate the local spheres and the SOEs, as it has been alluded, and at least...
Sir, I see your hand, you can come to the front, because I think we are now at a stage where we are also getting the inputs. So if there are any person who would like to make an input as well, please come to the front. Let me just see your hand. So you'll be number five, you can come to the front here. So it's number three, number four, number five, number six, number seven. Please come to the front, thank you very much. That's the final round. We've got seven. Thank you. Thank you, sir, you can continue.
Honorable Chair, and members of the executive. I get over my delivery like a mochutu any fair, because a good law to give for the boots or not for the inputs. So I have a crucial question here, like, I want to understand, what if the President refuses to sign the bill? Why, why the independence, how will the independence of the PSC be ensured? Like how we will be sure that, uh, the independence is ensured? And what mechanisms will be put in place to prevent undue executive influence over the commission's operations and decision-making process? That is the, the, the question that I have. I don't have many questions, but I had an input, but I'll wait for the platform for the input.
Are you, are you, are you going to wait for the, for the reply before you want to make an input? Or you can do it now as well if you, if you want to?
If I'm allowed.
Please continue, please continue. So you've got the question about the independence, that's a question.
Yes.
But I'm going to allow the, the, the inputs now as well, so please continue.
From, from, from the local level, from the local level.
Sorry, sir, can you just repeat your name if you're from?
Morena, Morena Malado.
Are you from an organization or just?
Yes, I'm from the organization of Sankoh.
Thank you very much, please continue, my apologies.
Uh, earlier you've mentioned that, uh, the PSC does not have, uh, powers to investigate, uh, like when the municipalities have, uh, when we have, uh, cases or things of the, the municipalities. So what I was requesting is that, my input is that, can, can the PSC have offices, PSC have offices in each and every ward at a local level? So that services can be nearer to the people. So that is my own input that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, number four. Thank you, sir. I think as a rule, if, if you come standing in the front, please, um, introduce yourself. If you're on beha, here on behalf of a organization, uh, please just indicate that as well. Thank you, please continue, sir.
Um, my name is Rekito Dlabe from Diverso from Sankoh, as well other, uh, other GBV organization that we have in our town. So, Honorable Chairperson and members of the parliament, I support the new Public Service Commission bill and believe it, it will improve public service delivery. However, I request that the bill include provisions for establishing offices in all municipal areas. This access to services is easily promoting transparency and accountability. I ask you consideration of the request to ensure the bills objection, objections are made with humble request. Uh, you could possibly, uh, ask to use my mother's time because I see we have older people. Okay. Uh, the visual agate tabam motogo, kizwa makhato ngama nga unanti youngsters and um, disability. Uh, kineki kabuchuani, uh, kika, kika amuela bili. Uh, imba neti fali tawo presidento ta esayana, uh, erogaena. And I beg kineki ba ta otsipona. Uh, mosebituwa komishini dilimote dilikana, unzo sabana hali. Now, kibona kaki sengaya chelate, yasi chava. No chetwanga te, because hagbo ne mosebituwa lona, debaka kina na di maspa la nse dikolea, ofaba, ba, ba ahidi sebele. Uh, I get them in the reporta indu na kawre, uh, you know. Now, ya bo be it, kore. Uh, matu anta tle tika hana ya wana, imba basina, mangola oba kahana kama. Di traksiti tle tika muna, crime inyulu ide. Uh, haunasa, ha, ha na supporto ya hota hu, hu so, kapai private company. Po taka ineli, uh, kutuani leto na tukia lebo.
Thank you, next person. Thank you, sir.
Good day, everybody. I'm getting Sebelo from Mangu Metropolitan Municipal. Good day, everybody. I'm getting Sebelo from Mangu Metropolitan Municipality. I'm an employee of municipality as well. Yes, I'm employee of Mangu Metropolitan Municipalities. In fact, this commission, I appreciate, even if you never imp, imp, you can check in our institution, like you go to police station, you hope they please, your doctor just above for me. You need to be fair and transparent here. Even within the Mangu Municipality, we use collective agreement as a guiding document to guide the municipalities. But certain individuals and individuals, truth need to be told. Individuals manipulate the very same collective agreement. They divert it so that it can sit their own. And if, if, if as an employee, you raise a que, you raise a que as an employee who's not satisfied, let me tell you are not doing it. Because people believe that there are municipalities without municipality. They are municipality, they make the municipality as if they own municipalities. In fact, decisive intervention is needed. You can go to clinic, our community chew a very, very long time. You see, if you go there inside there and see for yourself what the nurses are doing, they are eating dibegu and snupu the whole of the day, you see? So myself, I think this commission is the only way. As long as they can be, you can be transparent. As long as you can be transparent, seriously, you are going to achieve our own objective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's, is it the last person who wants to speak? I'm going to allow one more. Sir, I see your hand, you can come to the front, that's going to be the last input then. Is he more?
Uh, it's a olana la Diverso, po lefapimo khatuwa, kunta debama khunte mens forum. Uh, deba twaseweta ngahuloka sichava, lo lo khaliseweta sichava. Ki amuela bo emo bo lilin mbo bo na, let's layo ho bo na hori, ta dinto hori. Di no lo fa le hota ba tu. So kineki se kupa, ki ka tu swachi, na na kapa ngai ki ta kamohoa na hori na, kaiya kutu sajwa. Uh, deba tagana lama fapa, ntsa zeka bang tar, zeki bo na hori, na lama tata hota na. Ha huloka haro na hayaro. Haro ya ma fapenga di klinikke, kila da kala sa ma tata atin, rea police station, nera na lama tata atin. Reka di kagulu, nteka sebele tuza bo muntaka sujwa. Kibona ma tata ama nga ta ha hul. Haro ya mona di klinikke, uh, kineki kopa hori na komishini. Uh, humpo ho be ne mu niye, ta kapatsela ya hori. Huski ha ba le khefu, di pa ki, za hori na ba, hutsa sujwa ngori, klinikke sebele za ba tu. Kamaba ka ana, letla hota wo huffa na ga nta na ya hori. Uh, reko ta beke niye zin, ho jua za mama ngwa klinikke e. Ba twa ba dey kwa ba moshali klinikke, ba i kopa, ho reskela fuma na bo shasu. Ho kaba sujwa, hale komishini i kaya za hori. Kwe ding kapai, iska ya ti vita hai, i, i tempani, kada ho itati lezing, i sah, hota lekula hori na, ba twa za ba sebele zujwa sujwa. Rea, kama ni kadi police station, ena kisai tuwa la, yana ni kana na wa, i, senze i, kala sa wa na wizala. Di police station nza hori na leso, rea arre so koma la hori. Na di station commanders, kana, police station e, e, e. Ona lo hori ba ba etan, tene ta te onza no bo ba reka di case. Fuma na hori sa lo ritela nyewe, nyewe e, nikata la fele, zefela kapai haya attendwa eto. Even na mrau cha na ba tla di la ba jua za hori, di bo re, di ve na hati. Aba twa zuwa attenda case. Then ona wizasichava seze bubu du, isewo na hala, iweleka, police ma bo nesa. Angaka rolo, kutu seza ba tu wizasubu. Ka ro ba tili ya, uh, attendance ya bo. Then haro ya tata beke na, e, kibwa kana, na lanta ya bararu ya sebele tuza bo muntaka. Kineki kopa hori komishin, ike yeza, huso ta beke na hori, kiseza ba tu electricity niyo na ndetse re na. Fuma na hori, huso hona lebo mama ngba tla ba ba ki, ni ba regisa electricity, ba regisa ba tu electricity katela, e, isinyona. Of mana, obviously, let me cite an example. You buy a sheep as a whole at a farm. It costs you much cheaper than to buy it on the butcher. Kina hanarri, kona uji si. Uh, urekango mlemu ta kase hota ho Escom. Uregisa private company e, private company e, uregisa e. Then at the end of the day, the poor will remain poor. Kamaba ka la hori, electricity idule inyuluwa imba hosokaha. Kineki yeloka komishini ike nsa la ta ba zena mrau, kapo ta ho wa ho pshankisichava sahai. Ki ane bo agama nzuwa ma kutu ya.
Thank you very much, sir. Next person?
To Melan, Indian, I repeat. I don't want to dwell much on the issues that the president presented, presented. But, uh, my interest is, is on the municipality that I'm coming from. My name is Macheta Tota. I'm a representative from the metro municipality. Um, Chairperson, I'm, I've just heard that the bill seeks to, to strengthen the, the the commission. And we cannot give you mandates to, we want us to, to be seen, one, two, three to be done. Because now it's still a bill. And I'll make my input brief and exact. And, uh, I asked myself how local government will benefit from this Public Service Commission bill. Uh, even though we did not get, get the document on time, but I had to read somewhere about this bill. But I found the following very interesting. That the Public Service Commission bill can be, can benefit local government in South Africa in several ways. Number one, promoting good governance. Then the PSC will help ensure the local government adhere to principles of good governance and transparency, accountability. That's good capacity building. I'm aware that there will be training and development opportunity to enhance skill and competi, competi, competences. And what is important is investigation complaints. Uh, I'm aware that, uh, this, this commission seeks to, to be independent or have its own autonomy so that it can deal with the issues. Because, uh, where I read, I heard that there were some complaints that this commission, was only at the level of province or national. So there was suggestion that at least it would, can cascade down to, to, to local. But, uh, I'm not sure how I'm going to deal with the disadvantage thereof. Because I, I, I have read that the, the problem will be limited autonomy. And that the local government might feel that PSC oversight limits their autonomy and ability to make decision. And number two, the bureaucratic style or delays of the PSC processes of investigating. My slow or causing delays in addressing, um, local government issues. And number, and other things, resource constraints. The PSC may not have sufficient resources to effectively support and move all local government. But I'm, I'm willing to hear from you. And number four is, oh, emphasis of compliance. PSC's focus on compliance might lead to tick box approach rather than promoting innovative solution. Then, it's my input on, on how can we improve on such tropics? Maybe then enhance autonomy, streamline processes, resource allocation, focus of outcomes, safeguard independence. Um, and I ask myself, why is so important to support this Public Service Commission bill? Um, I felt that it's important that at least it, it, it deserve this robustness to investigate com, administrat, um, corruptions, maladministrative, maladministration to ensure the appointments and promotions are done. People have been promoted or appointed on merit and promote professional and impartial, uh, public services. Um, yeah, I think it's, let me see, yes, 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 yes. No, Chairperson, I thank you very much for this time that I was given. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, next person? I think that's going to be the last, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, thank you. Kalibon tate.
Um, I give you a more head, of mana sebaka sena. Sa hota itza tla tetu, ilin input. Uh, really sichava, sa Africa borogwa. Ilukutuwa reli muthlu, ibile reta ibile. Haro fuma na, li hedla, leo urekara lela ngolo. Ilin Public Service Commission. Obani bo niti, rinseresina, mo urekara lela nten. Haro kopa nalema tata, ma fapenga ama nga ta au mhusu, ro na ma Africa. Kahona, reza wipile etu, leo kopo, ya hori ha komishini, ni se sebeza. Kanedi di kopo za ro na ba tu, di li ke ho po tla ikiso. Eska ra muta wa kenzeo kopo, kapati tle mo ya hao komishini. Ibe etla hula ni, hota mkuwa pa mpirate ikenoma lukopete ibe ea lotele. Ibe di teli wa za ro na, kapai iti, itile di teli wa za ro na, adilangana kwe teli. Rea kopa hori, di teli wa za ro na, di ke di po tla ikiso. Ha holo holo hap. Di toro ta nentzeo ri dula ngoso. Rebe li office sa sebele, mo urekara fuma na nsebele zeten, haufina. Huffa pa la lo ra rapala meraya kaika, ro lotle tle ba ti, kialibu.
Thank you very much. Um, just, just for clarity, uh, so everyone understand. This is the Free State Legislature and we are part of the lawmaking process. The Public Commission, um, the Public Service Commission said they want to, actually, it's, it's not, technically, it's not a, an amendment bill. It's a repeal of one law and replacing it with another one. Uh, so technically, that's, that's correct. So what they want to take the old bill, throw it in the dustbin, and they want a new bill. My apologies. I hear there are a lot of service delivery issues currently. Um, and we don't come to you empty-handed as a Free State Legislature. We also have a petitions committee within, within the legislature. Uh, there's actually a petitions act in the Free State. That also is another method for you to get things done, whether it be in a municipality or a provincial department. Um, if you go outside later, you'll see, I think if you just turn slightly right, you'll see our petitions table there. And they'll be able to assist you with lodging a petition with a Free State Legislature. So we hear your grievances regarding, um, and your, your issues regarding service delivery. Uh, you can speak to them and that's another committee that will deal with, with your grievances through the petitions committee. I think to the members of the Public Service Commission who's going to, to answer, I don't want you to dwell on the inputs necessary. I want you to look at the questions and the questions I, I marked are the complaints and the grievances, the difference, which I know you have a, a system for that. Also, the issue of whistleblowing.